This Board of Education regular meeting Tuesday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. I have a roll call please.
Mr. Berry.
Here.
Mrs. Depp.
Here.
Mrs. Waller. Mrs. Phillips. Here. Mrs. Taylor. Mrs. Erber. Here. Mr. Trabizio.
Here. Start this call starting at seven fourteen. Uh, let's stand for the President of the Board.
The President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Mr. Berry, you need permission space.
Sure. Permission of North School District A is inspiring educational excellence and nurturing fire.
Let's celebrate the success we'd like to do so.
I would just would like to share that our new staff and our paraprofessionals were trained in CPI, which is our verbal de-escalation technique that we use to help support students that are in crisis. I am the certified trainer for the district and I had the privilege of working with our new staff and our new paraprofessionals to train them in verbal de-escalation. So they did a great job.
I'd also like to just give a quick shout out to the administrative team here. It's, uh, to anybody who's in education, you probably know it is not easy to classify special education teachers and we were able to fill our special ed teacher positions. So it's, it's quite a feat. I know we have some amazing individuals who I'm sure will do wonderful things in Norwich, but I really have these individuals, Mrs. Kuzic, Dr. Reviole, Mr. Bianchi, to thank for that. So thank you all.
Well, I'd just like to extend our celebration and, you know, of our new staff who are here today. We're really grateful to have all these new staff members joining us in Norwich School District A. Um, I know, uh, we went through, but just want to, uh, you know, one more quick time just introduce everyone. So if you could just stay on when I say the name real quick. Allison Gaios, second grade. Thank you. Fun fact, she loves travel and went to Europe this summer, so that's pretty exciting. Antoneta Longi, third grade special education teacher. Antoneta has a two-year-old son named Lorenzo that loves animals and the zoo and her husband actually went to Lee's school, so that's a fun parent. So Cindy Eddy, our social emotional learning specialist. Cindy's first son is a commander in the army in Cleveland and she has one grandson that's nineteen months and another baby on the way. That's.
Not me.
Thanks for clarifying. We're excited. Tim Larkin, our, uh, social worker, has once built a ten thousand-piece 3D puzzle of New York students. That's something.
Oh my God.
Krista Pitts, fourth grade special education. Krista has two cats, one named Maquis and the other one named Cinder. Likes to go on a road trip with family and when playing board games is very competitive and tries to grab us the money. Awesome. Uh, and then also would like to introduce Rebecca Arizona, fourth grade, uh, who has two dogs and a guinea pig. And enjoys gardening and her games. Just as I wanted to share a little bit about some of our new staff members and also just to make sure that they are welcomed into each district.
And Giles, we have Beth Horeen, who will be our eighth grade ELA teacher. Beth started her career actually here in North School District A and stepped away and is now back. She enjoys reading and she's our eighth grade ELA teacher, so that's a great convo. Virginia Hall is our sixth grade, uh, science teacher. She is from California and has not, uh, doesn't go around, has not been around snow. So she's excited for this year.
I first moved here.
When she, when you first moved here?
I love the snow.
But she loves snow, loves shovel, so. And we have a new sixth grade, uh, special education co-teacher. His name is Pete Maraz. Uh, Pete is, uh, in the community. He attended Lee's school and he's excited to start his career here in, uh, Norwich School District A. We do have two staffing changes. Uh, Alan Zwickel, who used to be at Lee's school, will now be joining us as our seventh and eighth grade writing teacher. And Judy Fig, who used to be our eighth grade, uh, ELA teacher, is now our fifth grade special education co-teacher. So we're very excited for our staff. Again, welcome. We thank you for joining us and thank you for joining us today.
Thank you. Any more questions? Action. Consider motion approved for the agenda presented over six months of twenty-two actually fifth-grade science. Can I get a motion? Is that person going and ready? Roll call please.
Mrs. Erber. Yes. Mr. Waller.
Yes.
Mrs. Depp.
Yes.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Mrs. Nierfeld.
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Trabizio.
Yes. Motion passed. Recognition of this debate here. Correspondence. Public participation, I believe you do not have. We have two FOIA requests as published in tonight's agenda. Berida, if you would like to see them there, published in the agenda. On to presentations.
Thank you. A few months back, I had spoken with the board about a new area in West Forty where they were making videos for the university video. We're very excited because our videos are here and ready to be shown and you are the first people to see them or not going to show these to the team or going to show these to your department. Um, so they're about three minutes long each and again, very excited, um, to share them with you today.
It's good that you all are there.
What, I told them to leave?
Oh, okay.
I was like, you guys need to leave because I don't mind your videos. I think the volume is there, so let me change it. I wanted to share with the community the wonderful things we have going on in our schools and so people can get to know us and get to know the great things that we have in store for the children and also the people that don't have children in the community, that they know the schools that they're supporting and what's going on in the schools.
We're excited to see our students thriving at Lee's school, from the strides in the classroom to their emotional growth.
The students are really the, the heartbeat of the school. We have some really awesome kids.
The teachers are really nice. They treat us with respect and they are really kind and helpful to us.
My teachers welcoming me with like a bright smile every day and seem like awesome friends. It's fun to meet new friends.
Our goal is to make sure we meet every student where they are and provide what they need.
They make it exciting.
I think a huge thing for people is to come into the district, see the family that we have and just see the inclusion of the majority.
Of course, we're always looking at academic outcomes and, you know, wanting to have that focus, but we truly believe that the first step is building relationship trust.
Our dedicated teachers and staff members work to get to know students and their families.
We're a very small community. It's a very close-knit community. People who are born in Norwich and stay in Norwich and that says something.
People who care about each other. Our teams take care of each other. We've been through a lot in the last few years and we couldn't have done that without each other and been supportive to each other.
Our motto, Tiger Pride, means being respectful, responsible, safe, and including others.
We bring it all back to those core values, those core virtues. It like helps them to be, be their best they can be and do their best.
It will help people like because, because you can get your friends and they will really like you and they will think you're really trustworthy. You treat each other how you want to treat them.
Our students receive many opportunities to learn and grow, including our after-school activities with the Norwich Park District and with construction of three new preschool classrooms. We can support more of our community's youngest learners.
We're excited to have all the materials and just more space for the kids.
The earlier that we can get our students into our building, the earlier we can build relationships with families, the earlier we get to know kids and we can put interventions in place.
Preschool is the foundation for learning, so everything that we do is planned-based and making sure that the kids know how to interact with peers and just go through the routines of school, so sitting down for the first time, walking the line, just being able to listen. Those are huge steps to get ready for, um, preschool.
And we'll continue to be responsible, spending money on student programs to improve their outcomes in the classroom and in life.
If we can be safe, responsible, and respectful, then we know that students leaving Lee's school are able to be contributing members of society as a whole.
For me, what keeps me going is just the family atmosphere. It's the way that everyone treats each other. It's the way that everyone respects each other. It's the way that the kids are happy walking through the halls and the staff is happy also. That is very important to me as the leader of the district, that people want to be here and want to come to school and to work every day.
That was the video. This is the West Forty Storyteller Productions and a man who actually did interviewing and wrote the script was Chris Coffey. He's worked for NBC News, so it's really exciting that, uh, West Forty has him on their show. And here is Charles.
Welcome to the board today.
Here at Giles School, our students and staff celebrate the success from academic achievements.
We wanted to reteach the students how to be students again, and so we did it from the basics.
Everyone, students of forty and every one of you.
I really feel like we're back and we're back stronger than we were before.
To supporting each other in the classroom and beyond.
We want to reach out to the community and all of the people that live in Norwich and just let them know the great things that are going on in our schools and what we're really proud of.
The teachers are amazing. Everyone's really respectful. They always acknowledge you.
I don't think every teacher can say anything inside their school. So if it was really good, at the end of the day, the knowledge you're accomplishing, it's important.
Giles ranked in the top ten percent for state assessments.
We give them the tools, the resources, and the opportunities and then all we need them to do is just hit it out of the park.
They make it very much.
We play like games to like review for tests. We do like different activities just to like help us remember things better.
We want it under mind. We want them to always be thinking about it, to do their best, to be their best.
Teachers and staff are key to helping meet our goals on student growth. The students have a class that's called Advisory in the morning and in that class they're able to do a variety of different activities to help them to grow together as a school and as a group.
Well, if you want to be successful, you have to give them the tools and the resources so they can be successful. So that's what we want to do. When you get the kind of support and also the, I mean, the push, right? We have to do a lot of the luck, so you get sort of proud of it, but also supported. It's a really delicate balance and I think we pull it off.
Here, students are rewarded for positive behavior. To be Giles-made means being positive, respectful, responsible, inclusive, determined, and engaged.
Which is like you always want to act that way in all aspects of life, like all the time.
And not just at the school and at home, but within the community.
We do everything we can to make sure our students are learning, but also feeling safe and loved and that they are welcome at our school at all times.
Our approach to learning combines science, technology, engineering, the arts, and math with critical thinking. And by the time our students get to Ridgewood High School, they have the skills to succeed.
I went to Giles from kindergarten days here and some of my best early memories are there. I made a lot of friends. The learning there was really good.
Got to play sports and won championships in basketball. Yeah, made a lot of friends and were grateful personally after that.
After-school activities and sports teams provide even more opportunities for student regiment.
We'd love when students get involved because when you're involved, you're focused, your time management becomes better, your discipline.
And we are committed to spending the community's resources wisely. So our goal then is to make sure we get our, the finances towards those programs that will help advance our students, not just academic achievements, but also in their social emotional achievements.
Having a close knit community is so important. The parents are such great supports for us. We really are appreciative of all the help that kids at home, make sure the kids are reading and they show up with a great attitude.
We still have a lot of work to do at Giles, but seeing our students happy, creative, and confident tells us we're on the right path. So as you can see, they're very professional. We will, uh, be open to our teachers on Monday on the first Teacher Institute Day. Then we will be sharing them after that with the community, with the village, uh, so they can put them up on their Facebook and on their websites, uh, and they'll be up on our websites, um, and, um, really just promoting both of our, our schools. Because they're both very well-known. I mean, I don't know how many of you know them. I don't like my voice, but. No, I didn't find hair coming from my hair. It's okay. I'm a little critical of yourself, but I, I think we did a nice job. They did, uh, they asked us some questions. We didn't know the questions beforehand, so then they just kind of pulled it out. The kids did a great job. So thank you, let, thank you for letting me share that with you today and you'll be hearing, uh, much more about these videos and getting them out to the community very soon.
Okay, administrative reports.
Yep, I just have a couple of things separate from my discussion items tonight. Wanted to share with you so far, um, as of earlier today, and this number has gone up today, we have nineteen new students at Giles, uh, twenty-seven new students at Lee, many of them first time in the country. So we're, we're seeing that we're continuing the pattern that I started last year with sixty families. Uh, currently right now, we have eighty-three kindergarteners registered and fifty-seven preschoolers. Of the fifty-seven preschoolers, thirty of them, we have awarded the PFA grant. We do have four spots left. We have, um, some students that are coming out of early intervention that we already know about that will need some of those spots and we have another screening. Our next screening is Tuesday, uh, August twenty-second. As I mentioned, we're hoping to hear from the state soon that, that we are being awarded additional seats. If we do that, we have about twenty-two kids on a waiting list. We'll reach out to them and I've been talking with, um, Kristin, Kabda, and, uh, Mike McGuire. They have waiting lists as well, so we'll reach out to them on, uh, our district DA students and then our waiting list so we can fill our seats. We've asked for, we're bringing us up to a hundred seats. So we're hoping that. Registration continues. Uh, on Friday, we sent out ninety emails to, uh, families who have not completed registration yet. So, um, I don't know how many we have in the last two days, but we're going to stay on top of that. Um, next thing, I just want to mention National Night Out, um, which was back on August first. Uh, our whole entire Advent team was there and I'm really proud of them for all, all coming and attending. It was a great night. They are predicting about fourteen hundred people over at National Night Out, which is a police community celebration, celebrating our community, celebrating the police within our community. It was a great night. We didn't run, uh, the same last year. We ran a wheel where the kids were rolling the wheels and we had a very long line. So this year we didn't have that long line. We were just giving away bracelets and stickers. So for us, it didn't seem as crowded, but I guess the numbers they're saying are actually more than last year. I believe they gave out like twenty-two hundred gift cards at National Night Out. So great nights from the Norwich Police Department and the Howard Hicks Police Department. Um, the Norwich seventieth anniversary parade is coming up very soon. It is Saturday, I don't have the date, but maybe twenty-sixth. Twenty-sixth. Um, I know you have a car that you drive.
Yeah, we're using a minivan. We're all invited to join the minivan. It should seat as much of us as you like and, uh, my wife is looking at a deck.
Yeah, no, you can correct that. Definitely be able to tell who you are, which is great.
What's that?
You'll be able to tell who you are.
Definitely.
And then my last item, just wanted to share with you, and I did, uh, blast this out earlier today, there was an issue with Pushpoint, which is our, our finance system for fees. Uh, the coupons that we put out there for August first for families that paid, and I'll have that data for you next month on how many families paid early, uh, the coupon disappeared. So, um, many people got billed today that had twelve or thirteen dollars charge. I sent out a blast for the door that we will get that fixed. Pushpoint is working on it now and it should, most of it should be fixed overnight, but give us a couple of days and we'll get that fixed. And that is my report.
Special education, Mr. Masters.
Absolutely. So, uh, some really great things, even though we are sold technically in the summer, um, we actually, uh, have a really exciting, uh, meeting opportunity tomorrow with our speech language pathologists. Um, we are actually collaborating with our West Forty colleagues, uh, to work on our assistive technology policy. So, um, kind of talking a little bit about what we had talked in the last board meeting about the IPAC that we have now, um, purchased for several of our systems with communication difficulties, um, kind of working on a, a higher order of procedure for how that will work for the district and kind of talking about that with all of our special education teachers. So really, really exciting to see this. This is going to be a, a longer-term project, but I'm very excited at the prospect of, of what our current staff will be bringing in addition to what we, we already have. So very, very exciting. In addition to this, we also have our co-teacher collaborations. This is really just the time for our special education teachers and both, um, their, um, general education counterparts to really start learning about their students now, um, becoming more familiar with their individualized education programs and then also starting to plan. So we have some of those lessons. How do we kind of help mold that to, to help make sure the kids make expected progress within that genetic setting? So really, really great things that's actually going, uh, started on Monday, will be going through Friday this week. So excellent, excellent stuff going. Um, and then the last thing, I jokingly have, uh, referred to as Spen Boot Camp. Um, we have spent a good amount of time on, uh, last week, actually last Thursday, focusing on how to write really high-quality IEPs. Um, no IEP is the same as another, but there are some really good techniques in how to kind of best represent that for a child in any district. So we really focused on that, focused on how we can as a, as a department move very smoothly from, you know, uh, from preschool all the way to eighth grade. Um, so we crammed about six hours worth of stuff into three hours. Uh, they did an excellent job, but I'm very excited about how, um, how our staff is really taking to that and, you know, we happen to have a little fun in the way. Um, that, that is my report.
Building reports, Giles School, Mr. Bietke.
The highly anticipated student scheduling mailing went out. It should be at your, uh, mailbox today. If not, if you have not received it tomorrow, um, it takes staff many hours to create a student schedule, I should say many months. We've actually started the pro, we start the process in April. We look at a, a variety of factors when we're designing a student's schedule. It is not as simple as just taking a student and putting them in a, in a specific class. We look at academic, social, emotional, behavioral, uh, um, and we try to demographics, try to support so that when we, when we develop a class, it, it meets all the needs of all of our students. Uh, so, uh, that went out, a welcome letter, a technology letter, a school dress code policy went out, the flyer for back-to-school night curriculum went out, and then student-led conferences, save the date flyer, went out to our, uh, our students. So we're excited about that. Uh, athletics, boys softball and girls softball and cross-country begin right away. Very important. I know I said it last month, but if, if you're interested in trying out, please make sure you have a physical on file. You cannot try out with a physical, uh, so that is extremely important. That's always the mad rush in the beginning of the year. Yesterday, we received these boys and girls' new softball uniforms, so we're excited for that. And again, thank you to our wonderful PTA for purchasing those, uh, softball uniforms. And then physicals, as a reminder, please make sure get the physicals turned in for our, our sixth grade students and also for our student athletes. And that concludes my report.
Preschool, Dr. Reviole.
Thank you. Uh, so just to start, I want to, you know, acknowledge our buildings and grounds team. We give them a, a thank you for all their hard work this summer. There's been a lot happening here at Lee and they've, you know, really been working really hard to get, um, the school up to, uh, you know, where it needs to be, to welcome staff and students back into the building. And, uh, you know, I know there's still some, some work to be done, but I'm sure as you were able to see from walking around today, there's been a lot that's, uh, you know, that's been in the works. And so I just wanted to make sure to publicly acknowledge their hard work because they, they really have been working hard. Echoing what, uh, Mr. Bietke said about, uh, classroom assignments, we have those posted to Power School on, on Friday and communicated that out. Uh, and, you know, similar to what Mr. Bietke said, those, um, class lists do, um, do take time and it's a process and there's a lot of thought put into those. Um, so, you know, we really do, uh, you know, appreciate, um, the fact that, you know, so many families understand that and, and, uh, realize the amount of work that our, our teachers take putting those lists together. We are excited that on Sunday afternoon, we'll have a, uh, PTA-sponsored kindergarten evening greet here at Lee in the courtyard playground. So that'll be a fun little event for, uh, kindergartners to come out and get to know one another before the, uh, um, year officially ends. And, and also for parents to kind of meet one another. And, you know, being a kindergarten parent, especially if you're coming into the school for the first time, that can always be a little bit, uh, a little bit daunting. So, um, so we hope to welcome our new families in as well. Uh, so we're really excited to, uh, come back with our staff on Monday. We have some great things planned, uh, for Monday and Tuesday and then welcoming students back to school on Wednesday. And as a reminder, we have our, uh, back-to-school night at Lee on Monday. Uh, we'll have curriculum presentations that go along with the supply drop-off. Um, so we want to make sure that, you know, that's out there, that, you know, not to just come and, you know, drop things, but actually, you know, coming, bringing those supplies, but listening to those presentations that the teachers are putting together. Um, we did hear some feedback, you know, at some of the PK meetings last year that there was really a request to have that curriculum night and to learn a little bit more about what's happening in the classroom. So we're, um, you know, really trying to, um, to respond to some of the requests that have come from the community, you know, um, through that back-to-school night. So I, uh, I hope that that is, uh, you know, successful and I think our, our teachers have the work to go put those presentations together and, um, and also hopefully, uh, with the separation of both the and Giles nights, that might also be helpful because I know sometimes it was a mad dash to try to get to both buildings in that time frame. So, um, and then also just wanted to share, I know the PTA is working on some things for September fifteenth. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of information coming out about that, but, um, kind of like a, a back-to-school, uh, batch or, or something of those sorts. And, uh, so I, I know there's been some work with the village to look at some, uh, street closures here on Portland with some festivities between five and seven-thirty. Um, I've heard some good things in the works with some games, food trucks and, you know, other things that are being planned. So, uh, we have some planning meetings that are coming up to go over some logistics, but just wanted to kind of put that on the radar as, you know, some more information to come on that. And otherwise, we're just kind of gearing up and getting ready and it's, uh, it's go time for us. That concludes our entire report for today.
Monthly staffing report.
Thank you. Uh, just to report on the monthly staff, we still have some paraprofessional positions that are open and we continue to, uh, to interview parapros and substitutes. We're adding a few more substitutes to our staff pool, which is exciting. And we did have an offer out to a physical therapist. So as you recall, the, the physical therapist we had last year, she took a full-time job. Physical therapy for us is only, uh, two days a week. Um, and the offer we had out actually was just ended. So we currently, right now, do not have a physical therapist going into the year, um, which is, uh, not ideal. So we're continuing to look for one and continuing to reach out to agencies to, to see if we can, uh, find someone for that, that short little two days a week. And that's it.
Board of Education, paying education, the board, policy development, deep behavioral intervention, the negotiations with community resources. Nothing to report, but we address those topics monthly. C, building and grounds, as Dr. Reviole and Hollis can attest, given our tour right before this meeting, there's a lot going on because of the grounds. there's a lot going on because of the drought. This summer was made very useful as a time when students aren't around. It's probably not actually do these things. So, we're glad to see much changes. Finance, we just had our committee meeting right before this, at 6:00 PM tonight. We had it. Communications, it's to develop. Norwich Park District, we'll discuss in close session. To consent agenda, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. A1 through... 14 A1 through 14, please be seated. Amanda?
Second.
Amanda, roll call.
Mrs. Nikko?
Yes.
Mrs. Thorbar Farquhar?
Yes.
Mr. Burdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mrs. Wala?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuneia?
Yes. Motion passed. Action, I agree. Your motion to approve the tentative, 2024, yours, 2028.
Second.
Maria, Molly, roll call please.
Mrs. Wala?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Burdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Nikko?
Yes.
Mr. Thorbar Farquhar?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuneia?
Yes. Motion passed. Discussion items.
So, I have five different discussion items to look at tonight. We'll start off with field trips. So, administration has worked on standards for field trips and procedures. So, we have a lot of policies in place for field trips coming up. So, just to share with you, the grade subject level will work together with the administration to plan a field trip. It is family-funded, so families will cover the cost of the trip. It is going to, the field trips will be all aligned to standards. That should not say Jupiter is the biggest planet, but that is pretty exciting to read that. Missed that one. And then we're going to be sending out a survey to seventh and eighth grade families about bringing back Springfield for seventh grade. But we're also going to send that to eighth grade since we didn't go to Springfield last year. So, this could be a year of extra going Springfield twice for us. And then we do have, Mr. Vieti has been working with the company on information about Washington DC as well. Do you recall in the past, we have gone to Washington DC? One time, we took a bus there, like, have a claim. The claim, I'm sorry, trip actually got delayed or canceled right because that was right when COVID happened, they were going in the spring. So, we'll be surveying our families to see if the Washington DC for eighth graders is something that we want to continue. It does come at a cost, I believe right now fifteen hundred dollars.
Approximately fifteen hundred.
We're looking at for that trip. So, we'll see. We're ready to go. Mr. Vieti has made those surveys already and we'll get those out once we get an established good school year.
Is there a minimum amount of kids that need to commit to...
I don't think they hit that on there.
No, yeah, there's, yeah. Is there was that a minimum on that?
Line. So, we are very excited about having all of our grade levels have all of their trips and everything planned out very well. And Mr. Vieti and Dr. Revio will be talking to the teachers about that on one of our institute days. So, I wanted to, the next item is our health, life, safety plans. Talked a little bit about this in the finance meeting. And I wanted to point out to you that if you go on our website and go under facilities plan, you can find both of our health and life safety plans. I know they're very small, how it comes out here, but I'm sure they can make that bigger too. So, I've been working with S T R Allen, our architect. He is going to be sending us our update for our September meeting for approval on the projects that we have completed. And so, we can start, I think it'll feel really good when we have these things checked off and we all see them and they're put by the IR and put by our architect, they're checked off. They are put through. So, we're really ready to start approving them and checking them off of our list, which is very exciting. But if you go onto our website, you can see the Giles and the Lee plans right underneath our five-year facility plan, which has all of our, starts off talking about our historical data and then all of our different areas that we're working on right now. What are the facilities? We're looking for approval in September of our completed projects. Questions? I just wanted to inform you of a couple of safety meetings that have been taking place. We had a safety meeting in July with the Norwich Police Department and the Norwood Park Fire Department. We talked about safety plans for the buildings. We reviewed our plan for drills for the year. Giles does a safety week where they schedule their drills all in a week or two weeks periods, kind of get them all in. Lee takes a little bit of a slower approach at organizing and planning out their safety drills. We also, we need the plan with West Forty for building safety and our threat assessment plans. We talked about at our meeting with Norwich Park District and the Norwich Police Department. The second set was on July 31st. Two members, actually three members from West Forty and their compliance, building compliance area came through both of our buildings. It was actually a pretty exhaustive walk through the buildings. I want to say the whole walk-through was about six hours in both buildings. And they looked at everything. They looked at all of our signs, our lighting, our doors, our door closures, our safety plans, the way that the students come in building, the door locks, they looked at everything. So, we're waiting that report right now. And I think that report will help us to see where we may need to allocate funds if we do need to allocate funds. Also, the next step of that is then taking the individuals from West Forty and having a meeting with the Norwich and the Howard Heights Police Departments and the Norwood Park Fire Departments and some key district DAB staff members, not just our administration, but we'll be bringing in our psychologists and our social workers to be looking at our threat assessment plan in general, the whole plan. So, this includes if there is a threat to a building, to an individual, or if a student makes a threat of self-defense. So, we'll be looking at all of those plans. We have these plans now, but it is good to keep looking at them to see if we can improve. So, this is going to be something off what we mentioned every meeting where we are. It's probably a year-long study for us that we'll be working with West Forty and then with the Norwich and Howard Heights Police Departments and the Fire Department. One piece of that, now adding on the next layer where we work on reunification plans. So, we have a good plan and we have a good app that we use on getting kids out of the building. But if there was some reason we needed to cover reunification somewhere, we need plan on what that looks like as well. So, that's going to be a big focus for us this year. I'm pretty excited about it. It was, it was long and it was hard to go through all of the little things that we did on July 31st to look at all the doors and look at all of the, just the safety plans that we had. One thing that really they mentioned to us several times was keeping all the doors locked, not just the stair doors, but all of our interior doors in every classroom locked all the time. I know that's difficult, especially when you're working with a group of newcomers and they're not leaving the room or coming back to the room. But that is something we will need to stress to our staff this year. They're, you know, they do a lot of research into different kinds of shootings and different kinds of things that happen in community places and have found that if the doors are locked, that truly is a deterrent. So, we do want to make sure we keep everything locked up very tight. One of the parts that we're still working on here at Lee is the area outside of the office where you go down into the kindergarten lane where you have to open those doors and turn those doors around to secure them so that you can't get into the rest of the school. That's something we'll be working on soon. And when I say soon this year, to make sure that we have that area then. And if we're doing a building rental here or the after-school program here, there, it's really only one area of the school, but they can get into it. They can't get the access to the other. So, I think we're in a good place. It's just, will be a lot of work. I wanted to share with you also today some district website communication pieces that are new that I'm actually really excited about. First, I wanted to mention the parent portal. So, when you go into our website, the parent portal that exists for both of the schools does have these nice little tiles out here. So, if a parent is looking for, I want to order lunch and that's at Gourmet Gorilla, where do I do that, then they would know they just click on the Gourmet Gorilla tile. If they want to learn something about Giles sports, they can click on that as well. The piece that I hear so often that people can't find are the tracks. So, we added the Giles and the Lee tracks to the parent portal. So, it's just a simple little click away and then they can go right into the updated tracks. We realize we have a lot of systems, you know, for, in order to go in and register, you have to go to Power School. In order to pay, you have to go to Pushcoin. In order to order lunch, you have to go to Gourmet Gorilla. In order to pay for lunch, you have to go to Pushcoin. Certainly, streamlining that is our goal. I'm not sure which way we'll go with that, but that is something that I think our parents would also appreciate. We do have MSF as a link here also to go to their website and PTA. So, if I were looking at our website and a parent up here in the top corner where it says parent portal, that's where you can find out where these tiles are. And it goes directly to, like, if you want the school supply list, you can just click right on that and you will find the Giles and the Lee's supply list. We're trying very hard to make our website more user-friendly and so people understand how to find things. The next area that I want to highlight for you is the new preschool handbook and PFA information. This area I love. The preschool teachers and our SLPs and our social workers put together this summer. They are naming our preschool the Tiger Tops. Adorable little tiger there. And they've come up with a mission statement. They've come up with some definitions of what a blended preschool is, all of our information about the times of our programs, how you can join the program, the information about the PFA grants, how you sign up for screenings, it is all on here, as well as signing up for the program in general with the tuition-based parts of the program. The preschool staff directory is there as well. And then if you click on, on the right side here for these preschool links, you can click on meet the teachers. So, you can see a little bit about the teachers and who, you know, who they are and the program that they're teaching. And as you can go into a communication center for parents where you can find out about home visits, communication that we're sharing with parents. You can find out all about the curriculum and assessments, how we're supporting English language learners. This is another new part of our website, which I'll share with you separately, the health information. And then, of course, just general information. Now, what time do they come in? What does the daily schedule look like? All really important stuff that we want our parents to be able to find quickly and access so they know, here's what the schedule looks like. Here's the times of the day. Here's what each of these things are. This is what morning meaning means. This is what spec means. This is what is read aloud is. We, because we have the PFA grant for all of our preschool students, I'm sorry, for 30 of our preschool students, all of our preschool students don't need to bring in any supplies except a change of clothes, which I kept. The school also through the grant is providing snack to the students through Gourmet Gorilla. And then if you click on this top link right here, click for the preschool handbook. We worked on this summer, this this summer as well. And it is a very lovely, very professional-looking handbook that goes through, Dr. Ray, starts off with Dr. Revio's letter about preschool and about the school in general, goes to the mission statement and the staff, how to reach the staff, and then all of the information about the district, calendars and everything about the program. It's really beautiful, really beautiful. And preschool parents will be able to find that information quickly, easily. The next part... Is the ELL services section on the website. So, underneath our student services, you will now see some new tabs that you didn't have before. The English Language Program, which talks about our ELL program and our Transitional Program of Instruction and our Transitional Bilingual Program of Instruction, how a student is in, how the student gets out of the program, what the bilinguals parent advisory committee is, and all the information and the assistant principals names down here because they actually run those programs, that program. In addition to that is this wonderful new addition of our Health Services, which is new as well. And our nurses worked on this at the end of the school year and it's all up and running now. So, it has all the information about health requirements for early childhood, kindergarten, second grade, sixth grade, all the new students need, and then all the health forms are just a click away down here. So, if you needed the sports physical because you want to try out for a sport at Giles, here's the sports physical form right here. You can print it off and you can have everything that you need. And the last section, oh, that was the Health Services section. I'm sorry. Let me go back to where we were in Student Services. One of the other areas that we are required to have on our website, which we now have or are in compliance with is a McKinney-Vento Act, which are students who are homeless. So, we have information about what that definition means and what the federal law is providing for families. I am our McKinney-Vento liaison, so it has my information down there for people to contact me. Previously, the Special Education section that is on Student Services was there before. It has our procedural safeguards in a couple of different languages and then our parent rights to interpreters that means. You will also often see the Giles tip line showing up on the right side for any tips on anything. And we do actually have a lot of tips that come in and we take that very seriously. We work on our tips as they come in. So, just wanted to introduce you and the community to some of those new areas on our website that we're excited about. We are about a year off from our contract with our website. So, we will start having conversations soon about if we want to keep the format in general the same or if that is something we'd want to change. Looking at our main part of our website, meaning this part of our website, if we want to keep these tiles we have, if we want to change how the tiles are, we'll be having those conversations very soon. Okay, the next is the legislative updates, which I want to share with you every meeting. So, just three quick ones. Public Act 103-05000 is, this is an interesting one. So, this one states that the teacher, after July 1st, who's hired after July 1st, can receive tenure after three years. Typically, that is four years. So, walking into the district during a fifth year would award that tenure if you have at least proficient evaluations. So, that will be changed for us. The biggest part of that change for us is we moved to a point of offering tenure to a teacher, which we celebrate with, we give them a little pub commitment on the 21st when we bring them back on our institute day. That basically means that we want to live with that teacher forever. So, we take that very seriously. So, we need to look into that a little sooner and make sure that, we're at that point. And that is anyone who we hired tonight and at the July meeting because that would be after July 1st. It also changed the RIF non-renewal date. So, it used to be 45 days before your last day of school. That is now changed to April 15th for all school issues, which is kind of nice because every year we're cutting out the calendar and making sure we get to the right date. But now everybody's April 15th. SB 1352 requires a teacher's resignation be submitted at least 30 days before the first day of the following school year. This one's an interesting one as well. So, this one means that if we're starting school on August 21st, then the teacher has until July 21st, counting the days there, 30 days, to resign and you, it basically can't resign within those 30 days before the beginning of school. This one is maybe an interesting to watch because typically what's happened in the past is if you were tenured, then that was something that was in law at that time. However, ISB was not following up on it. So, if you went to ISB and said this person, you know, resigned from us and we're two days away from school starting, they really didn't have the personnel nor did they have the people to actually search everything down. But now they're saying they will. So, this one will be interesting. Yeah, and just one last thing on school code change that the governor has signed. He is still just suggesting that March 19th of 2024, which is the presidential primary... He is still just suggesting that March nineteenth of twenty twenty four, which is the presidential primary, he encourages school district to close or have teachers institute day. Do you recall we changed our calendar and had a teachers institute day that day? We will all be at Giles actually on that day and here, the election will be here then. And then for the presidential election itself, which is November fifth of twenty twenty four, that was declared legal. So we will not have school on that day. Ignore what we have at teachers institute day. So that's for next year's calendar, but we'll start next year's calendar pretty good. So that, is it? Any questions about anything?
I have more questions. So what about John Vanderman? Is that even an option in a school district? So if you can't resign and present less than the third day, how about if they just don't show up for three days?
Well, what it will do is it'll cause you will lose your license. Yeah, if you're not showing up. And that's what the, what the state will do if you're within those school divisions. So they'll hold on to your license for you, which makes it very difficult. Now, if you're going outside of education for a position, it really doesn't matter. We have one person on our list tonight that's going outside of education. There's really nothing that could be done. But this law was just signed three days ago. So, and it did go into effect immediately, three days ago. So it is, like I said, it's an interesting one to watch and see where it goes. I think that many school districts are really struggling for teachers right now. There are sixty percent less people going into education programs in colleges. So that's really scary. In four years, we will have a much, much less amount of people coming out of preparation schools for teachers. So that, what that causes us to think about is retention and how we can, and not just financially, because financially is only one part of this, but how we can.
Are there exceptions to that resignation code?
Not, not, I have, and one of our law firms actually sent it out.
I just curious.
There are ways around it for teachers. Now, our C D A does state that if we move you after you've already been placed, so we placed teachers now by May first, if we move you after May first, you can retire. Our C D A. Can those still hold? Yeah, we're going to have to look into the legality. I would imagine our C D A holds over it, but we'll have to look into that probably the next evocations if that, if it is a change, we'll change that. It's not the least that has happened this year, but I mean, it could.
More comments, any? Okay, I need a motion to go into closed session. Feet from seven. Ten minutes for average, seventeen. Eighteen. Now a motion, go into closed session. Three second. Roll call please.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mrs. Wada?
Yes.
Mrs. Mcilloch?
Yes.
Mr. Burry?
Yes.
Mr. Robert Barfield?
Yes.
Mr. Trubutia?
Yes. We are now back in open session at ten oh three. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Burry?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mrs. Wada?
Yes.
Mrs. Mcilloch?
Yes.
Mr. Robert Barfield?
Yes.
Mr. Trubutia?
Yes. We have this call. You're allowed to nineteen A, consider approval of more school district, a building rental application. Can I have a motion?
We're going to table that.
Which we're looking at. We will table nineteen A. You're allowed to personal action items. I need a motion to approve twenty A one through twenty C one.
Motion. Second.
Nine and one.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mrs. Robert Barfield?
Yes.
Mr. Burry?
Yes.
Mrs. Mcilloch?
Yes.
Mrs. Wada?
Yes.
Mr. Trubutia?
Yes. Motion passes. Forward, beating reflection.
Not letting out just a video.
I need a motion to adjourn this meeting at ten oh five. All in favor?
I'm not in favor.
All. Close. The meeting is now adjourned at ten oh five.